Good morning, everyone. It is about 8:30 in the morning and it is, this is the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting, and I will go ahead and call us to order. And Rod, will you go ahead and take the roll call, please?
Good morning. Commissioners Boujack.
President.
Diaz.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
LaGrand.
Here.
Oliver King.
Hennessy.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Sparks.
Hudson.
Teal.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman. Burl.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Hildenbrand. DeBoer.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Chair Steck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 present, three absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I would now call in Commissioner Teal for the invocation.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Please join me in bowing your heads in prayer. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our proceedings here today, and for all Kent County staff. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations, and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make, for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all, and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you, now and always, through Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we have a couple of special orders of business this morning, starting with Doug Small from Experience Grand Rapids. I should say Doug Small et al.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Steck, and our dedicated county commissioners, and thank you for your service as residents first, and certainly for your confidence in investing in our work in building the tourism economy. I'm gonna run through this pretty quick, because I don't want to get the chimes, and so if you need more information, this will be available to you, and you can reach out after the meeting. Just a quick, our mission, our vision, I always point out our vision, because we do want to be the must-experience destination in the Midwest, and we're getting there. A little bit about us, not-for-profit private corporation. Our board is made up, half of them are hoteliers, the other half are community leaders. We operate the visitor services program at the Gerald R. Ford International Airport, and then we have a collaborative agreement with Mike and the West Michigan Sports Commission, who you're going to hear from in a little bit. This is our budget, just a little historic here. You can see that previous high budget was back in 2019. Proud to say that we bounced back really strong from the pandemic, and our budget for this current calendar year is 13.5 million. Lodging excise tax contribution, again, you've seen it grow. In 2022, Kent County provided us with $2.2 million to market the destination. We're very appreciative of that. The remainder of the budget, most of the revenue, comes from agreement we have directly with our hotels, where we collect 4% of the room revenue directly from the hotels in a marketing assessment. As I mentioned, tourism has come back strong. If you look at the number of rooms sold on the left-hand side, you'll see the previous record was in 2019. We surpassed that by nearly 90,000 rooms sold in 2022. So, an incredible bounce-back from the pandemic. That leads to record room revenue, which is what you want to see to build the tax base. So, room revenue was nearly 249 million in 2022. I will tell you that through the first quarter of 2023, room revenue is up 9.5% over last year's record. I have preliminary numbers for April. It's gonna drop that number a little bit, but we're pretty bullish on another really successful tourism year. A little bit about our tourism economy, as you can see here, 19 million visitors in 2021, and the other things here, I won't go through all of them, but I wanted to point out that we are drawing visitors, these are the top states people are coming from, and I think people are surprised to see that some of our top states are as far away as California. So, a great draw. The leisure business in Kent County is really, really strong right now. Switching to group sales, this will show you what our sales team is doing. They produced 918 leads last year. Those are leads for future convention business. We hosted 481 groups, and we contracted in 2022, we contracted 432 group pieces of business into the future. So, again, the future looks strong. As we look ahead, there's certainly challenges. Workforce, you hear that in all industries. It certainly is in our line of work, and then consumer sentiment with the economy. It's still up in the air. The pent-up demand is still around. We're not sure how long that's going to be able to hold out. Our focuses are building the workforce, but if we're gonna do that, we're gonna diversify it. We have a hospitality academy at Ottawa Hills High School. We're in talks with East Kentwood right now to do the same there. Again, try to build interest in the tourism industry, and while doing so, diversify the tourism industry. A couple of the other things that we're doing, you could see there, so we continue to work at building this brand. At this time, I'm gonna turn it to Janet, who's our senior vice president, just to show you a few of our marketing programs so you get an idea of where your investment is going. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to just show you a couple items that we're using to promote Kent County and Grand Rapids, and invite the nation to come visit. Video, visuals, they've become a really strong piece of our marketing messages, because it's imagery that tends to inspire people to take action or go somewhere. So, last year, we launched a playful Dream Grand and Go video that, to date, has had over 1.4 million views, and it was recently awarded a West Michigan Addie Award. This year, we followed it up with something that we're feeling good about. In the later fall, we're gonna follow that up with a all-season version of Feeling Good. So, look for that to come soon. So, wait, I don't want to show you any snow at the moment. It would be not really, although maybe last week when it was in the 90s, that would refresh us a little. The Pure Michigan Marketing Partnership that we've been able to activate, along with our partners at Travel Michigan over the last many years, has proved very successful to us. In addition to benefiting from promoting this destination as part of the Pure Michigan marketing campaign, they also match every dollar that we invest with them in their marketing efforts. This year, they've expanded the offerings available to us, so this lists a few of those things. One of the items that we worked on, again, a new commercial video. We created this new spot with them, a goal of 20 million impressions this year, and if you listen to it, you'll hear that there's actually a second voice that they've woven into the Pure Michigan messages, and it is Jessica Karamore, and she's a Detroit poet.
Fresh creativity, perspectives, and free-handed pours. In Grand Rapids, there's always a fresh idea for an amazing trip. But what's even more refreshing? Crafting your own larger-than-life memories in a place that invites you to dream grand. So let your senses awaken, and let your palate come alive. Because keeping it fresh is always welcome in Pure Michigan.
And then lastly, we've really amped up our efforts to promote the area for families. So, we know this is a great place to live, raise a family. It's also a great place for families to visit. And so, we've launched into some new campaigns in encouraging the kids to lead the play, and have families play their way when they're visiting Kent County. And with that, I get to show you all the wonderful team members that I get to work with each day, promoting and inviting people to Kent County. Any questions? Good?
What, do you have more presenters?
No, we're done.
Oh, okay. Well, my guess is there's a few questions. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Question regarding rooms in Grand Rapids. You're saying that we're booked into the future, that we're at record levels. Are there enough rooms? Do we need more hotels?
Loaded question. Let's see if there's any hotels in the room first. Yes, but it has to be a specific type of hotel. In 2016, there was a destination asset study done, and that study identified a need for another convention-style hotel downtown adjacent to the convention center. The CAA started down that road. In fact, I chaired a task force in looking at the feasibility of putting a 400 to 500-room hotel on top of the convention center. We were about there to deliver the goods, and the pandemic hit. So, we were asked to put it on hold. I've kept it fresh. In fact, I sent something to Administrator Vanderberg this week about it. I've kept it fresh in people's minds, because our competitors haven't stopped. And if we're gonna continue to be competitive and build the tax base, which is sorely needed to pay the debt service, then we better have the proper assets and amenities to do so.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say congratulations. I love the video. I think that was very timely. I like the way that your team has made sure to be very inclusive of everyone. You're doing an amazing job, Janet, and Mary, and Doug, and all the rest of the team. I'd like to know about the 19 million people that you talked about. Are those unique visitors, or are some of them, you know, repeat?
Well, you're certainly gonna have some repeat. You know, one of the things we pride ourselves on is, once we get people here and they see our destination, they come back, they come back, they come back. Art Prize is a prime example of that. People came for Art Prize for the first time, and now they're regular visitors. So, it's a combination of them. It also includes our convention groups. But I always tell people that everything starts with a visit. So, if a conventioneer comes here, they like our city, they're gonna bring their family back for a visit. So, it's a combination of those type of visitors.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Doug, I do have one question. But can you just tell us, in your experience, what are some of the largest draw events in the course of the year?
Well, we always have to mention our quilters. Quilters will bring upwards of 20,000 to this community in August. I think they might be in September this year. There's a variety of them. One, proud to say, and I want to thank you and Sheriff's Office, the National Sheriff's Association is meeting here in June, and they're bringing 4,000 people to our community. This is a high-profile group. In fact, when I came here 15 years ago, my vice president of sales at the time said, "I need you to go to Washington with me," because I had known the meeting plan for our sheriff's association. We're trying to close them, bring them to Grand Rapids. That was 15 years ago. So, they're finally coming. But that tells you how long it takes a lot of times to schmooze the business. So, that's a high-profile one. We have the Fisheries, National Fisheries Society, Mary? American Fisheries Society coming in. This summer, month of August, has, every week, has a group of more than 1,000 coming into our destination. That on top of everything that Mike's doing and other things. So, we're looking forward to a busy summer.
Good. Thank you. Thank you to your team as well, for all the work you do. All right, our next special order, Mike. Mike Costfather from West Michigan Sports Commission.
Morning, Chair Steck, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to be here presenting to you, and it's always convenient to present alongside our partner organization with Experience Grand Rapids. They do such a great job promoting this destination. We utilize those assets and the work that they do to focus truly on sports tourism, and it gives us a lot of power and ability to do so. So, we certainly appreciate that. I know that there's eight new commissioners that may not know much about the West Michigan Sports Commission, so I'll start with just a little background, and then I'll talk more about our impact that we've had to date. So, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was formed 15 years ago, 16 years ago, in a public-private partnership led by the county account, really to have an impact on the lodging tax. Our mission and vision, much like Doug showed, is to promote this destination, but really do it through sports, and bring that energy and vibrancy to our community through sports, but also be an economic engine in that way as well. We've got a very talented staff in Row Two behind me, that really take on a lot of the work that we're doing, and really are having the successes that I'm about to show you. Over our 15, now 16 years, we've really grown into three distinct operations. Our core operation of the West Michigan Sports Commission is to bid on or work with local organizers to bring in sport tournaments or sport conferences that bring people into our community, and of course, they stay in our hotels and our restaurants. We then began a signature event in the State Games of Michigan, supported by our friends Meyer, our title sponsor. So, the Meyer State Games of Michigan really being our signature event of multi-sport, and I'll certainly get into the activity on that. And then saw the opportunity to grow our impact even further in developing infrastructure. And through a capital campaign back in 2010 through 2012, raised some private donations to build a sports complex that I'll talk about as well. But again, recently, Meyer came on board, and they're our naming sponsor of that, being the Meyer Sports Complex. We're governed by a board of 15 board members, two of your fellow county commissioners, Commissioner Breevy and Commissioner Teal. We appreciate their service to our board. And then we've got an advisory council that is a makeup of our entire community, who are passionate about sports, passionate about the work that we do, and certainly want to contribute to our impact. Financially, you know, we operate, the bulk of our revenue comes from our partnership with Experience Grand Rapids. It's a contract or agreement that we hold with them, where we get a percentage of the collection of hotel assessment and lodging tax, and we're able to do our operations from that. The other bigger chunks are our sustainable operations, in the Meyer State Games of Michigan, and then Meyer Sports Complex. And then, of course, some special events, our annual lunch, and our annual golf outing is coming up on Monday, that brings some more revenue in for us to do our work. And then on the expense side, again, I mentioned the big chunks are sustaining operations that are bringing visitors into our community, and that would be the Meyer State Games of Michigan and the Meyer Sports Complex. And then predominantly, it's trying to do more fundraising, but mostly sales and services. You know, speaking on more of a bigger-picture level, sports tourism is nearly a $40 billion industry, and communities across the country are investing in infrastructure to get a piece of that pie. So, we've really got a lead on many of them, because there's probably two dozen projects going on right now for communities to be a sports tourism destination, where we are already seeing the impact of the work that we're doing. Here, just kind of shows some of the growth, and I compare that to our work and measurements in this next slide, which really hits on our direct visitor spending, which utilizes a calculation that's widely accepted throughout the industry, number of events hosted, where we're averaging about 100 events on our event calendar, and then hotel rooms. Here you see continued growth from 2007, when we were formed, up through this past year. Of course, the biggest dip, obvious, 2020, from the pandemic, and the impact that that had and the restrictions we had. But 2021 was a great bounce-back year. In fact, sports tourism was one of the first segments of tourism that brought people back into our restaurants and into our hotels. 2022, I think, as Doug indicated, for tourism, was a record year for us. So, really showing that not only a bounce-back, but sports tourism and tourism in general is back, and we only expect to see continued growth. Looking at some of the numbers, and what does it mean to Kent County? You know, it's been over 1,000 events that we've been involved in. Using the calculation through Destinations International for Sports, it's been about $557 million of spending back into our communities, and almost half a million hotel rooms. So, taking those half a million hotel rooms, times an average group rate, and the 5% that the county lodging tax collects, we brought $3 million back through our work to Kent County, directly to Kent County. Our businesses, we support small businesses by bringing people into the restaurants and the individuals that they employ. So, we've got quotes from a couple of our friends with Flows and with Country Inn and Suites. Obviously, a lot of content on here, just pulling out some highlights. You know, being a record year in 2022, we had 112 events, over 60,000 hotel room nights, and the number of athletes was about a quarter million, and you see the estimated spending. Some of the bigger events are one unique event that we're able to bring in. We bid on it in 2019, hosted it in 2022 as United States Bowling Congress, Junior Gold. Some of these things just fly under the radar. You know, you're not aware that maybe we're involved, or you're not even aware maybe that they're in town. Certainly, our hotels are, our restaurants are, but it brought in people from over 40 states and three different countries. It brought nearly 4,000 youth bowlers, and when you talk youth bowlers, they're traveling with their families. They utilize these as vacations in the destinations they're going to, and the spend was over $7 million. So, a significant impact, and that's just one example. Here, you know, it's tough to do it in words, so pictures always kind of helps. Our United States Junior Gold, we work a lot with our volleyball events that Phil DeVos plays, one that just happened a couple of weekends ago. Youth hockey tournaments are big in Michigan and in our area, and then working with adaptive sports. We work closely with Mary Freebed, wheelchair and adaptive sports, and the Griffs, sled hockey, and other adaptive sports opportunities. Speaking to our other operation, the Meyer State Games of Michigan, truly is a multi-sport celebration of sport opportunity, where it's open to all ages and all abilities. We've had anywhere from four to really 100. We had a Centarian participate in track and field a couple of years ago. So, that was exciting, but great stories that come out of this. Are these the chimes from me, or is that somebody's phone?
No.
Okay, good.
You're good.
I only have about 20 more slides to go. Kidding.
All right, so maybe you're not so good.
But our Meyer State Games of Michigan is celebrating its 14th year for summer games, and the planning is going on right now. If you came into our office, which actually is just directly across Calder Plaza and 300 Ottawa, and I welcome you to come in, because we could use a hand, you know, you'll just see the event operations and see all the planning that's taking place. But we're gonna have over 35 different sports going on, and we expect over 6,000 athletes from nearly every county throughout Michigan. And we've got our opening ceremonies, which again, is that celebration of sport. It'll be at the Meyer Sports Complex. We sent out invites to all of you. We hope that you can attend and really witness what this means to the people coming into our area, but also for our local residents. Again, some photos from past opening ceremonies. You know, we have, again, anything from archery to wrestling, and you know, certainly see track and field. We do a lighting of the cauldron by bringing in former Olympians that reside in our state. This is David DeGraff, who was an Olympian, I can't recall exactly what year, but in USA Team Handball, and then some of the different activities in both martial arts and lacrosse. Speaking to the Meyer Sports Complex, again, it's had an impactful operation on our mission of bringing visitors into our community this past year. 21 tournaments, over $8 million of estimated spending, and nearly 6,000 hotel rooms, and then the cumulative over its eight seasons. Photos, again, from that, you know, it's really incorporating both men and women's sports. We've got girls' fast pitch softball, youth baseball, adult softball. And our miracle field is a special field. If you've not been there, you should go and experience that. The purpose of these miracle fields is to be an inclusive environment, and offer the ability for kids with disabilities and even adults with disabilities to shed those disabilities, be part of this environment, and play the sport of baseball. And the stories, again, that come out of that are truly impactful, and it's a blessing to have that field as part of this complex. So, the success of the complex leads us to look at, how can we continue to be impactful to our county, to our hotels and our restaurants, and bring visitors into our community? So, we started a Winning Street campaign to both improve and expand the complex. We have a partnership with Aquinas College, so we have collegiate ball up there. We have opportunities to bring in collegiate tournaments by putting synthetic turf on the championship field. Then, we'd add some natural turf to the lower left-hand corner, which is field number four. That would give us three fields to put on some collegiate tournaments, and really stand out as we already do as a premier destination. Resurfacing the miracle field, it's at its 10-year lifespan, and we want to sustain and ensure that kids with disabilities and adults with disabilities can continue to play the sport of baseball, and then grow the impact that we're having by adding another quad, adding parity and equity to the complex through a comparable championship softball field, and then similarly, adding a couple of fields that would equate in distances and measurements, so that we can bring in some collegiate softball tournaments. And then the explosion of pickleball. You know, truly, it can't be denied. I think when you look at it, people often wonder what is pickleball, but it is offering an opportunity for all ages to participate in the health and wellness that sport bring. But also, it is about an economic boom to our area. There's two significant tournaments. One is our Meyer State Games of Michigan, the other is the Bear City Open. Both sell out in under an hour. They're capped, because the amount of courts that we have to compete on. So, it's certainly a sport that continues to grow. It's not going away, and we're looking to capitalize on that, to both bring visitors into our community, but also offer our residents an opportunity to get out and be active. So, with that, thank you again for the opportunity to present. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Mike. We'll see what questions we have. Commissioner Oliver King.
Good morning. I learned something new. I didn't know we had this in our community, so it was great to learn about you today. We have a gentleman who is always talking about esports to the Board of Commissioners. Is there anything happening around esports as it relates to this?
Well, yeah. Esports is another one of those that is out there, that there's huge opportunity. We're seeing investment in our high schools, in our colleges around esports. They're creating labs dedicated to technology and computer science, but also esports. And they have esport clubs, but some have esport varsity teams at the collegiate level. So, there's no question that there's opportunity around that. It's really identifying that opportunity, but we've worked with Dee on one of his events in providing a grant opportunity, and we've had several conversations and continue to, on what we can do to work together and bring more esports into our county.
Commissioner Antor?
Good morning, Mike. Good to see you and Doug again. Wanted to bring up, we do have a lack of facilities here in West Michigan for conferences and events. With the closing of the Delta Plex, we've lost a big chunk. And I just wanted to remind you guys, you're probably well aware that there's a plan in place to try to turn the old Art Van Conference Center into, it'd be a fairly significant building. It's got over 100,000 square feet, along with, in that plan, they want to put another hotel up there, which would help, obviously. And we're losing out on a lot of events because we don't have enough room. That's a shame, because people want to come here, but there's no room at the end. So I'm just here to encourage you guys to, any help that you can provide with Alpine Township to help get some funding, they have a road they need to expand in order for that whole thing to happen. It's a road expansion. And right now, it's who's going to pay for it type of thing. So any help that you guys could provide, it's going to pay for itself really quickly. Just pose the need.
And thank you for that comment. You're preaching to the choir, and if my national sales manager were up here, he'd say, let's build it. Our team did go up there and they toured it, and we're encouraged by it, because you're right, there was a hole left with Delta Plex going away, and we're scrambling. We lost some business, you know, you're well aware because of the work that you do on the site.
See the tear coming down my face?
And you're right. Number one is infrastructure. If we don't have the right infrastructure, we lose business, and so we need to continue to look at that.
Yeah, I think we actually put between 15,000 and 20,000 through every year, and that's just the attendees, not counting exhibitors from around the world. So it's a big chunk, but thank you so much for your work. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Mike, thanks for being here today, taking time out of your busy day to be here. So I'm going to tie into what the two previous talked to. You know, if you look when you were here 10 years ago, just the amount of sports activities we've had and what we have today. I mean, you mentioned pickleball. When I saw John McEnroe playing pickleball, I knew that, you know, it arrived. But the EA Sports, you know, I read where the Granville Public is funding a team now. You've got the robotics competitions, you've got the Lego competitions, and I even heard of a school that's got a competition fishing team. So how does your organization, with all the changes on how human beings exercise, recreate, how do you try to stay ahead of the curve? And obviously, infrastructure is going to be driving that, that, you know, we can't go after it if it's not feasible to, you know, host that?
Numerous ways. One is going to our industry conferences, which stays up on trends and what's happening, and so that we can realize that. Another way is through what used to be Sports Manufacturing Goods is now Sport Fitness Industry Association. They do reports on what's selling, you know, so by what's selling, they know what sports are growing. And then lastly, it's really strategic planning. So we are in a strategic plan year right now. We have a consultant that's doing a report, looking and assessing our destination comparable to other destinations. What are we missing? What trends are we not seeing? And we've got a report that will be coming out, a draft report, August 1, where we'll do a presentation to our community stakeholders. Again, we'll send an invite to all of you. We'd love for you to be there and hear what our consultant has to say, so that we can work together to identify those trends, identify the opportunities, and potentially invest in what we need to, to stay in the mix, I guess, so to speak.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Mike, I just, I normally don't care for when people up here just give you guys kudos, the people that come to present, but I wanted to just give you some kudos. One of my biggest disappointments when we read you the district lines is that the Meyer Complex is no longer in my district, so it's in Commissioner Teal's, but I still claim it in Plainfield Township. And I just wanted to say what a great benefit that's been to us and the township, and then also kind of helping to bring together that sort of greater Rockford corridor there along 10 Mile. It's been wonderful, the investment that's been made there, and to see the effect that it has on the economy, and some of that continued investment on that corridor is fantastic. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And let me just remark on that, because what I didn't do in my presentation is talk about what it spurred in addition to just our investment. It was a partnership truly through Kent County, but also with Plainfield Township in this land transaction that spurred Premier Park. But our investment brought the road and infrastructure in. We brought archery to the table so that they could work with Plainfield Township. We now have that indoor eastern archery complex and outdoor archery. There's great learn to shoot or learn to arch or archery, whatever they might call it. I've done it, but I should know. And you should take advantage of that. But also, you know, we worked with West Michigan Mountain Bike Alliance, and there's eight to 10 miles of mountain bike trails now back there. We work with Rock City BMX. There's a great BMX track, and kids can come from our local area and learn to ride. They've got bikes that are loaners. And then, you know, the investment by Plainfield Township rounded it out with a couple of soccer fields. So it's truly a multi-sports complex, and it's a public nonprofit partnership, you know, including Kent County. So it's amazing and wonderful, but thanks for your remark.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Mike, Doug, again, thank you for everything that you and your group does for West Michigan and bringing people and sports to West Michigan. Prime example of, again, selling ourselves and our volleyball tournament that you had last weekend. It sounds like you both have work to do to bring a few training camp days of the Detroit Lions here based on some comments. So again, good work.
I saw that in the news, and I searched for Dan Campbell's email. It's not easy to find. I tried to send him something saying, hey, let us know, we're here to help.
And you might be past the NFL age, so he's probably not looking to sign either.
True.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd just like to give a shout out to Jade Low over at Experience GR. We're both are alumni at Godfrey Public Schools. So great to see her. Whoa, 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 there you go then. I'd also like to mention another Godfrey student though. He founded a soccer team here in the area, has been working with a lot of entities to try and build that team up and to keep growing the soccer scene here in West Michigan. Soccer is very big in the Latino community, and it's only constantly growing. And so I was wondering if, you know, with these talks of possibly bringing or creating a soccer stadium in Kent County, is there any current talks, any current plans to partner with or to keep growing that scene?
And thank you for that. Soccer is huge. It's still the number one participation sport for youth and continues to grow. You know, I'm on the design-build committee for the soccer stadium because they realize, yeah, you know, it will bring in a professional team, but it needs to be used by other uses. And so we're looking at that with our sales department and services department of how else could we use it? But we had another consultant come in, and they looked at our soccer community, and it's too fragmented, is the challenge. We need to find a way to bring it all together and be more united, and a professional team needs that, to go from the youth, and it might be recreational, and that's okay, but those that aspire, those that have the capability to become more of elite than to collegiate, than to, you know, or to travel to collegiate, to professional. We need that pipeline and that stream, but in order to do so, we need to be more collaborative. And the Sports Commission is willing to be a player and helping to have those conversations because it's definitely needed.
Vice Chair Bree.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share my appreciation for the Sports Commission. I've served on the board a number of years now, and finally, this spring, I've gotten to attend many games at the West Michigan, or at the Meyer Sports Complex, and it's a beautiful facility. I would encourage you all to go out there for the kickoff of the Meyer State Games in a couple of weeks, but the fields are excellent. They're well-maintained. My son plays baseball out there. I'm up there probably two, three times a week, so I'd love to replicate something like that on the south end of the county, so I don't have to go all the way up 131. But thanks for all the work that you do, and Doug too, with Experience Grand Rapids. I appreciate the insights you give and what you also share, you know, Doug, with the airport board. So thanks. I look forward to continuing supporting you guys.
Thank you. And hopefully, you're not eating dinner before you go, so you're buying a hot dog. So do I.
You know, there's also plenty of businesses that I can tell have grown since the sports complex has been there. You just see a lot of growth right along that corridor. So thanks.
Commissioner McLeod.
Chair, thanks for your presentation for the West Michigan Sports Commission. As a longtime basketball mom, and having traveled all over the country and spent lots of money in hotels and restaurants, supporting kids that have played the sport for so long, it's really good to see that we're investing so heavily in these sports opportunities for youth as well as adults, and so glad to see that we're making so much progress here. I just wondered if you are working with any of the local units of government that are interested in, you know, building like sports complex in their various parks and things like that? I know in Kentwood, we had a park that was donated to us, and we're considering, you know, potentially maybe a soccer complex or something like that to help bring people to our community, but also to West Michigan in general. And I just wondered, like, what sorts of partnerships you're working on that are supporting those communities that are thinking about that? And are you making connections with them to really get them into this space so that it is, you know, supported more broadly?
Yeah, absolutely. When we first launched our plan to build infrastructure, really, we wanted to partner with the municipality to build infrastructure, and then we would fill it. It's unique for a sports commission to take that effort on their own and fundraise and then own and operate. Fortunately, it worked out. It's sustainable, and we're able to have a wonderful complex that we're able to bring a lot of people into. What's that, what that has spurred, and because of its success, is other communities that are interested in reaching out to us on sports tourism, like Kentwood. And I've presented to Walker and to Wyoming on similar things because they have projects or land or master plans, and they want to know, how can we incorporate this into it? Speaking directly to our conversations at Kentwood, I was part of one of the committees that went through the process to reimagine Covenant Park and what it could be. There was both a passive committee and then an active recreation committee, and so I spoke to the benefit of sports tourism and what it could be. So those talks are still ongoing. We're still reaching out. They are certainly part of our strategic plan and being welcomed and discussing to be part of the plan, but also part of the presentation so we can grow from there. Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Boujack, I apologize if I overlooked you earlier. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate you bringing us new commissioners up to speed on what the Sports Commission is. I wasn't aware that it was a nonprofit. I'd like to echo Commissioner Oliver King's support for Mr. DeAndre Jones and his efforts to bring esports to Grand Rapids. And you mentioned that we have high school and collegiate-type level esports efforts ongoing. I'd like you to think bigger. And for example, my next-door neighbor came to me and said that he was going to an esports competition national, and he was going to, I think it was Baltimore or Boston. And why can't Grand Rapids be the esports destination where, you know, we put on a big event where people from around the country, like my next-door neighbor, say, I'm going to Grand Rapids for esports competition, you know, where all these people from all over the country, all over the world, will be competing? I think, I ask you to think big and find ways to partner with Mr. Jones and bring esports to Grand Rapids. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. And that conversation continues. My Director of Marketing Events and I went to St. Louis to one of those competitions that filled a 40,000-seat arena. It was electric, and, you know, it was young kids drinking Mountain Dew and eating Doritos, but they were going to concessions. They were spending money, and they were a great fan base, and that was League of Legends, which is one of the higher, you know, level esports games that are used in that major type of competition setting. So why not Grand Rapids? Absolutely. I love that question. I love that attitude, and that's what we're saying. So we are working with DeAndre. We are focused on esports, and we want to bring that here. Absolutely.
All right. Commissioner Sparks, did you have your hand up?
Thank you for that. I'm really glad that at least Commissioner Oliver King and Commissioner Boujack mentioned DeAndre. He comes before us every time. I don't think he's missed the commission meeting, and he has such a passion for this. If there's a way that you could maybe mentor him, bring him along, take him to, you know, maybe one of the bigger esports, I know that he's trying, and he's got a good base there, but there are some things that need to be fine-tuned that we, you know, had discussed. But this right here is right here in our backyard. This is a perfect opportunity to take someone who is right here and help them grow, because he's only going to promote Grand Rapids. So please, as you're, you know, going about talking with him, make sure that, you know, we're remunerating him in some kind of way and making sure that we're building him, you know, as a community member. So thank you. I know you will do that.
Yeah, and we are. So thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you for all you're doing. As you talk today about, you know, the stadiums and the fields up on 10 Mile Road, and then the potential for other places, it takes me back to when we began funding your commission. And one of the intents then was to put heads and beds, if you will, all over the county and to move beyond just what was downtown and to create places for people to go throughout the county. And I think it's been successful in that way, and I'm sort of drawing back on my history to bring that out.
Thank you. All right. Everyone had a chance, so again, thank you, Mike, to you and your entire team, and Doug and your team, for all the work that you do. It's inspiring and clearly been successful in getting us back on track. And a reminder, some of that feedback is apparently when some commissioners are not speaking, but they still have their microphones on, so if you're not speaking, make sure you turn it off, and that'll stop that feedback. All right. Next item is public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to address the commission on items, action items only that are before us today, you will have a next chance later on in the meeting. If you have general jurisdiction issues, action items only. DeAndre.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I prefer Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Temerick Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49504. And I actually am going to align with the public comment because I'd like to thank the West Michigan Sports Commission for actually giving me $1,000. They actually were the second organization that gave me a grant to do the esports competition before our fundraiser, about $7,000. It was $7,250 to be exact, but they were the second organization that actually supported me to actually be able to do the esports competition. When I first got the grant, I was like, all right, I gotta hustle up, and the budget was $5,000, and I'm really not scared to fundraise because I feel like I got the passion. I can go speak to people, and I've been, I was able to get 46 people to sign up. I was able to get 40-plus people to come. I had young parents, I had young African-Americans from the hood playing young white kids that weren't even 10 years old in NBA 2K. I have these pictures, so if you guys want to see the work that they supported, we actually did something very innovative in that work aligned to help me being able to win an international business award that I have to go to, Visionaries Award, that I actually won, and I have to fly to Las Vegas for. So the West Michigan Sports Commission did give me a $1,000 grant, and I really appreciate them giving me that grant to support the work that I've been able to do because I was able to win an international business award. Also, we are working on a $100,000 esports competition, the UEL Ultimate World Championship, but it looks like we're not going to be able to do it this year because the dates aren't going to work, and we don't have enough time to really get all of the funding because it's going to be at least $100,000 to bring a $100,000 esports competition here. But we'll get all the logistics, see the type of revenue we'll be able to bring, fill out some hotel rooms, and be able to get your neighbor to come to our esports competition. I'm glad that I came here and I continuously speak about esports because now the commissioners are starting to hear about esports within their own lives, and that just shows you the impact that esports can have. So I asked the Kent County Commission, when you guys have funding, when we think about economic development or economic opportunities or quality of life, or just bringing esports here- here, that when you guys have funding that comes from our state or our federal government that you guys support the West Michigan Sports Commission, so we can bring that $100,000 esports competition here in 2024. So we can bring people from around different countries in the United States and eventually have an esports team that actually builds workforce development and creates jobs and creates infrastructure that will eventually, as I'm working with GRCC, our Local Community College, to develop an esports program and the YMCA and community centers and GRPS and KDO, which actually is eventually going to receive some funding to develop their esports infrastructure. I just ask that you guys continuously support the West Michigan Sports Commission, but you guys also look in esports. Look at it as an avenue to build a quality of life and economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. We're of course always interested in hearing from you, but that was not an action item. So that was a general jurisdiction comment. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman.
You have up to three minutes and this is for, again, action items only.
Daniel Scut, longtime resident of Kent County, more importantly, a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I am addressing the resolution number one about giving a raise or making the part-time coordinator a full-time coordinator. Permission to proceed?
If you're prepared to address that item, yes.
I'll read directly from the statement I found online. Grand Rapids Kent County was one of 13 communities who participated in the National Initiative Gateways for Growth to develop a local welcome plan. The community-led plan is designed to help Kent County residents in five categories: civic engagement, economic development, safe and connected communities, education, access to service, also an excellence in service delivery and inclusive participation. To date, Kent County has received $91,000 plus for that. I would just like to remind you that our fellow county citizens, the thousands that are being murdered at 320 East Fulton and now the many on Cherry Street through planned genocide, that they are also entitled to, quote, "safe and connected communities" and also to be inclusive or to be included. If they are not included, it is hypocrisy. Safe and connected communities. Please take some of this $91,000, use it to support these poor families that are contemplating having their child murdered through abortion because they feel that they cannot afford to care for the child. I cannot think of a better way to spend some of this money. By the way, thank you, Commissioner Teal. I appreciate that powerful invocation and certainly we need every aspect that you ask the Lord for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on action items only? If not, I will now move to the next item, which is consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move today's consent agenda.
It is supported by Vice Chair Breevy. Comments or questions? I see none. This is a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein. Hildebrand.
Yes.
DeBoer. Merchant. Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeses, 0 nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8A, our resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move resolution number 59 of today's date to convert one part-time welcome plan coordinator position to a full-time position. This comes to us from the administrator's office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments? If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion say yes.
Yes.
All that oppose say no. It is approved. We'll move to item 8B and I call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 60 of today's date, State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Regional Community Collaborative Grant, comes to us from the administrator's office.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? I see none. This is also a voice vote. All that support the motion say yes.
Yes.
All that oppose say no. It is approved. All right. We'll now move to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission on general jurisdiction matters at this point, you have up to three minutes. Please identify yourself. Good morning.
Good morning. I like that prayer as well. Very powerful prayer. But, you know, you've had a hearty discussion and some of those things is very helpful to the community, but I'm here.
For the record, your commissioner, former Commissioner Mayhew.
Oh, yes. I'm former Commissioner Paul Mayhew, for some of you that don't know. And I really appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the inclusiveness. I appreciate the inclusive conversation and you are doing a fine job. So, but I'm here today to address sort of the opposite of what has been talked about because we got a group, we got people in this community and they're not just poor people that suffer. And Trinity Health has created a situation to where they will, they say they will finance a person regardless of their situation. So that means that people in this community, if they're having a crisis situation, can go to the Trinity Health with their mental health situations and get them looked at, dealt with, and hopefully case managed. Now, I was a therapist for 32 years in this community and I know that this is needed, what Trinity Health has done. But I just wanted, and I want to thank Lisa Oliver King for asking me to come to speak, you know, because I am fairly well-known. So I'm speaking to this because this is something that Trinity Health has done that has touched my heart because when we can do better for the least of us, then we're going to be able to continue to grow as a community and grow in a great way. So I just, this is so powerful. And I got paper here because, and then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna leave this paper here so you can copy it and send it to everybody, you know, but the, when you got crimes and murders and stuff like that and everything that every time it happens, they see and say, this is a mental health related situation. All of it's not mental health, but a lot of it is, you know? So I got, when we talk about the co-occurring disorders, I got a little piece there here that when I leave, I'll leave this here and hopefully you'll take a look at it.
If you could give it to Rod there, he'll make sure he gets.
Yeah. So I just, you know, as a therapist for 32 years in this community, I looked at my job as bigger than just sitting down there touchstone. I looked at this work as psychosocial work that has, has to do with everybody in the community. And they touched my heart and the chairman was there and he spoke eloquently about the issue of, and I'm.
Well, we can't cut you off when you're talking about my eloquence.
Okay. Oh, that's what happened. Okay. All right. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go now, but I just want to come and highlight the fact that, you know, Trinity Health is going to be doing a lot for the left out in this community, people that don't have money. And to say that you're going to be able to do this without first asking you, where's your purse? Where's your money? You know, I think that's leap years, light years into the community, into the.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew.
So my, my assessment was that one minute of your prior comment was general jurisdiction. So you have two minutes left.
Thank you for your generosity. Just remembered Memorial Day where we remembered our fallen heroes that give us the freedom to even gather like this. I would just like to remember the thousands that have been murdered at 320 East Fulton over the years and also on Cherry Street through planned genocide. Though they had to die, praise God, the scripture says they went immediately to heaven. And now they are worshiping the Lord Jesus Christ in brand new, sanctified, healthy bodies. If you're watching this video or listening to me here today, we have a program to help poor mothers that are thinking of destroying their child. See me afterwards. I can give you this brochure. Many are being helped. Many babies are being saved at 320 East Fulton. Last time I was here, I introduced the Comstock Act, which is still a federal law, which does not allow the mailing of any items having to do with abortion or murder through the mail. Hopefully, the Supreme Court will soon be deliberating this as the lower courts deliberate it. But again, these cities and counties that have enacted this, I mentioned some of them by name, people like you introduce resolutions to enact this act that's been on the books. And those cities, those counties have become sanctuary cities and counties for the unborn. No more murder in those cities and in those counties, not just cities, but counties. Please consider this and as Mr. Mayhew said, this is for the poor and the city will be blessed.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll move to our next item, administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few items today. We have our fifth and sixth cohorts of the Kent Disney Way Customer Service Training going on, actually at the Health Department this week because we had a conflict or Grand Rapids Public Schools had a conflict on the space we have been using. Also wanted to mention just a thank you for everybody who put on the grand opening of our North Services Complex last week. It was very well attended. I think we heard some great remarks and it's just another achievement in Kent County's growth over the years. And I know our residents will be well-served by that complex. At the same time, we said goodbye to Al Jano last week, who had served us 36 years plus in facilities maintenance, very large shoes to fill. However, you know, we keep moving and we're already vetting some very promising applicants for that position. We are very busy. This is a busy time of year for the administration as we work on putting together the recommended budget for, for board review and discussion and also working on six labor contracts that are up at the end of this year. Also, twice a year, we do brown bag lunches in 14 different locations around the county with our employees. It's just a good chance to have some face-to-face conversation, talk about what the county's doing, hear questions, concerns from our employees. If commissioners would like to sit in on any of those, you're more than welcome to. Just let me know and we'll make sure that you get plugged in. Also, we have had a very robust response to the employee survey, employee engagement survey that we've had out there. And so we hope to, that will close soon. We hope to get a few more responses, but we're well over 750 so far. So very pleased with that. After what seems like maybe too much time and effort, we did finally successfully get the deed for the state police, the former state police lab up on the Fuller Campus. So that's now part of officially owned by Kent County, part of the campus. I had actually told Al Jano that he wasn't allowed to retire until we got the deed and he got it three days before his retirement. So it all worked out well for all of us. Also, oh, let's see. We had two of three informational sessions with DPW staff and commissioners last week on the Sustainable Business Park, actually last week, this week. And, and we've had 14 commissioners attend so far. We have one more session next week. Anyone who's been through can come again if you'd like more, another whack at it or certainly if the seven who haven't been through have an opportunity. I think they've been very good exchanges as far as just learning opportunities out of what is a very complex project. Also, we're getting close on a couple of different staffing studies and that has been a fair amount of work as well. So.
That's it. All right. Thank you for your report. All right. We'll move to the next item, reports. Any commissioner report items. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So yesterday, the Lake Shore Regional Entity Substance Abuse Advisory Board, we need something to do to shorten the name of that committee. Matt, it's, it's always committee meeting I go to that it's, it's tough to leave happy and cheerful. Substance abuse is still a problem in our community as it is, you know, across the country. The recent study showed that there's been a downtick of about 15% of people in excess centers with opioid problems. Now, some, some may say that that's a, a good thing. On the opposite end, methamphetamine use is up 15% and that in itself is a dangerous trend. And looking further into the people that aren't coming, there's a lot of people now feeling that people with opioid problems aren't even going to the access centers and just trying to deal with it, deal with it themselves. So a lot of issues out there. The top substance abuse is still alcohol. It's starting to lose ground. Marijuana is quickly catching up to it and some feel that that's going to overtake it. Now, when a lot of people think of marijuana, you know, we looked at all the proposal ads saying, you know, it's a harmless drug, you know, parents will be responsible. But last year I saw a report where students and children under 18, the amount of marijuana use is ticking upwards. And when they dug deep into that question of, you know, why are you using now, the number one answer back was, well, I see my parents using it, so it's got to be safe. So there's a lot of challenges out there for, you know, mental health and substance abuse. A lot of times it's intertwined. So there's some work to do. I'm glad that we do have organizations within our community to try to attack this. You know, the Red Project is doing an awesome job on not only assisting, but getting people the help that they need. So I had to find something positive then so you all didn't feel bad when I left. There was $2 million of unspent COVID and it was put out as a grant for four people or four groups to access that. So there were 20 that applied. Four of them got grants. I'm happy to say that one of those where Our Hope, which is located in Grand Rapids, received one of the four grants. It's 495,000. You would think if the math would have been right, if it was 2 million divided by four, it would have been a half a million, but I'm assuming the state had their hands into it. But the good thing, if you don't know anything about Our Hope, it's, they're going to open up a second women's facility and additional detox beds. So that's a plus, a plus in our community to fight the, you know, epidemic on so many different levels. So thank you, Chair Steer.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to just kind of echo. Commissioner May, Commissioner Mayhew and Commissioner Ponstein's comments. As we all know, unfortunately, we had a young woman commit suicide down. we all know, unfortunately, we had a young woman commit suicide downtown, I believe, last week or the week before that. And I'm, I, somebody added me to a Facebook group where there's people just kind of listening into the scanners in our county. And just in the past few days, I can't even tell you the number of calls that have been made for suicides in our area. I'm definitely glad that Trinity Health and that others are committed to and are working on doing what they can to address the mental health crisis that is present everywhere in our community. But I definitely do believe that we need to be doing all we can to do our part to address causes of poverty, the reasons why these epidemics are so widespread in our communities. So I, you know, I, I hope that we can, we can do what we can and hopefully in the near future start bringing these, these numbers down. But just like Commissioner Ponstein, I'd like to not, and on a, such a, I guess, sad note, Commissioner Oliver King and I last, or after our last Board of Commissioners meeting, met with representatives from Together West Michigan, who are working on advocating for the Child Village immigrant and refugee rights, along with other things. And so that group, along with myself and Oliver King, and I'm sure most of us or all of us on this board are looking forward to having further discussions later this year around the Child Village and other things that will be coming before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to thank you all, to those who attended the informational meeting on the Sustainable Business Park. It's definitely one of the biggest decisions we'll make this year and, you know, in the years ahead too. I think it's a huge impact to our community. So I think the most information you can gather to make an informed decision is key. Our next, there's one more informational session next week after legislative. And then also next week, Thursday, the Board of Public Works will be meeting in this room for a work session. So Thursday morning at eight-thirty, I would encourage you all to attend. We're gonna go through the whole project and we'll also have members from Energia there, who's our, our lead partner in this project. So they'll be there to have discussion and answer questions as well. So, and if you haven't had an opportunity yet to go on a tour with the members from the Department of Public Works, I would highly encourage you to attend. You know, if you want just a one-on-one tour, we can make an arrangement for that as well. So it's a very important thing. It's definitely something that Kent County is leading in and will be a big change here for our community. So a great positive impact. And then one more thing, too, the airport should be opening Concourse A next week, so on six-one-six. Look forward to that and seeing some of the media surrounding that. Hopefully, you all get an opportunity to fly out of there in the near, near future. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor, did you have your?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you Chair Steck. Last Friday, Commissioners Merchant, Hennessy, and I and Administrator Vandenberg attended the CAA, the Convention Arena Authority Board Meeting. Very good meeting. A lot of great things going on. Rick wins the chair of the board from the Amway Properties and presided over the meeting and Rich McKegan, who's the executive director, presented. And a lot of great stuff, a lot of synergy with what we've heard today with Experienced Grand Rapids and the Sports Commission. Of course, the CAA is a partnership, local, state partnership authority overseeing the management finances of the arena and DeVos Place, DeVos Hall. A lot of great entertainment, a lot of talk about art prize coming this fall. So a lot of great things from that standpoint as well. So I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Any other reports? If not, just one brief report from myself. We did attend the, the ribbon cutting, or actually we call it the wall-breaking event for the Crisis Stabilization Unit. Commissioner Mayhew referenced that. That is a joint effort by Network One Eighty and Trinity Health. So we're really excited about getting that project started. Look forward to the ribbon cutting early next year. So if nothing else, we'll move to miscellaneous. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Steck. So in public comment, no, I mean, public presentations, we heard about all the things that are happening in Kent County. It's just fantastic, the amount of work and, and volunteers that are out there to bring these events to us. I wanted to highlight one of them. I sit on the John Ball Zoo Board. If you didn't see the Lantern Festival, your chances are over because the last three weekends have been sold out and it's remarkable of the amount of people that have come in through that exhibit, not just from Grand Rapids, but all over the state and the surrounding counties. So I'm very proud of the work they're doing. You know, I still remember what the zoo was like when I was a little kid, what it was like when the county for a dollar purchased it from the city of Grand Rapids. There are still challenges within the, you know, you know, the zoo. They had, you know, took on a facility that was badly maintained and, and some things just purely not working. But they're making great steps. I mean, the Pygmy Hippo exhibit is open. If you get a chance to see that, that's a world-class exhibit. You won't find many like it, you know, across the United States. They're also going to start the redo of the Otter exhibit. That's long overdue. That's going to be probably a two-year project also. But the one thing we, you know, do have to address is that, you know, the zoo is there. There, you know, there was a million wants to try to put a wild animal park out on the Belt Line where Meyer Gardens is now. You know, the zoo's there. It attracts a lot of people. It's got some growing pains, but we, you know, we do have to address that parking issue and get a better way to park vehicles and get people to and from that zoo. And one of them is that, you know, a bus line so the people in the inner city can access that zoo, just like anyone else that has a car that can drive there. So I, you know, look forward to the challenges. The word is, is the Lantern Festival will be coming next year. It'll be different if you saw this year's, this coming Friday is their annual fundraiser. That was in hiatus for a couple of years due to COVID, the Rent a Zoo. So if you've got a free Friday night, come on down and you'll be able to see the Lantern exhibit because that's one night that they didn't have open sales to. So just throwing that out and thank the county for all the support they've given to the zoo.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to mention, now we talk about the Department of Public Works and our efforts to recycle and so on and so forth. I just read a report that currently in the United States, we're only recycling about five percent of plastic, which is shameful really, when you think of the impact plastic has. I would just suggest that in the future, maybe we back off some of our other recycling, you know, targets like metal and glass and things of that nature and really focus on plastic. Because right now, we're just not getting it done. We're spending a lot of money chasing this dream of recycling, but it's not working for some reason. And I think plastic has a far the greatest impact. So I'd like to see us kind of go back and look at that one issue and see if we can laser focus on plastic. And two, last time I was here, I mentioned the fact that my granddaughter was the second fastest three-thousand-k runner in the country. She is now number one and as a sixth grader. And she's looking to train at elevation out in Denver. She'd mentioned to her dad she wanted to go out there. And I still can't believe she's in sixth grade. He said, well, that's going to cost some money. So she went out and got a job to help pay for a B and B for a couple of weeks. So very proud of her and maybe she can come to Grand Rapids and run at one of the events. So thank you.
All right. Anyone else on a miscellaneous item? I don't know if this is miscellaneous, but I, did you mention the time of that meeting, Vice Chair Breevy? I think it's eight-thirty in the morning.
Yes, it's eight-thirty AM on Thursday, the fifteenth.
The fifteenth, right.
In this room.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous? If not, I will call on Commissioner Teal for a motion.
Thank you Chair Steck. I'm adjourned.
Any support for that one?
Yes.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.